My understanding is Joan is ill and we're not able to be here tonight. And in the absence of a chairman, it's appropriate for the board to elect an acting chairman. I'll take a motion for an acting chairman.
I'm going for Richard D. to be acting chairman.
So you are declining? Yes. Okay. Motion for acting chairman?
No.
Is there a motion?
Mine? What are we going to talk about?
We're here to discuss the report and the recommendation. Go through the ONS and go through the various items of changes, discuss them. By my calculation, there are eleven separate changes to discuss.
Okay. So just spearhead the conversation?
Basically.
I'll do it just for the sake of...
Okay, then I move the mic.
Is there a second?
Oh, second.
Can you roll call vote?
Do a voice.
Oh, is that how you do it before?
Yeah.
Okay. Alls in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pos, same sign. Okay. You are the acting chairman.
Alright. Okay. Sounds like we have several things to go through. What are we going to do with the minutes tonight? Are we going to talk about them? Any changes or...
Well, it's only... I kind of prepared a list of things. And assuming... And I'm assuming we're going forward. So I would say the first thing to be discussed would be the status of the minutes.
Okay.
And whether there are recommendations that could be changes and modifications.
Alright, I guess with that, we can start to discuss the minutes. You guys all had the chance to look at them, review them, we got them. All those things. Okay. Is there anything that you guys have seen that need adjusted or changed? Or would like to have the tapes or any video available to make changes from? Or don't feel that they represent it as well as they should?
I read through and I didn't see anything stuck out.
I skimmed through and I didn't see anything. And I've watched the tapes from the meetings that I was not on the board for.
Okay. Richard, do you have anything that you're seeing there? Mike have a few things that...
You want to start, final last quarter?
Yeah, we can start with the June eight meeting. And that's probably the one that I have one correction that I would like to see made. Page four. There was a conversation. And it ultimately led to me asking Mr. Flott if he was reporting to prepare the applicant. And I still stand by that statement. It's in the record that I do... But I would like to read above why...
Which line? Which line was going to get there?
See if this way to find it. About halfway through the page, it says, "Mr. Cornell asked if Mr. Flott..." Asked if Mr. Flott, if he is reporting to prepare the applicant.
Okay.
Above that...
So I'm just making a sentence in front of that?
Well, above, there's a few that says, "Mr. Flott noted, 'We are not getting anywhere.' Ask for what is wanted for the next meeting and you will make a motion." I believe that... And you can review the minutes and I can give you the time. It's... I believe it should read something to the effect that, "Mr. Flott noted, 'We are not getting anywhere,' and said to tell us what you want for the next meeting and I will make a motion to recess."
Okay, so you want to ask for, please say, "Tell us..."
Tell us what you want for the next meeting and I will make a motion to recess.
So it goes, "Mr. Flott noted, 'We are not getting anywhere.' Tell what you want for the next meeting and you will make a motion to recess." That's how you want that to read?
Tell us, "Tell us what you want for the next meeting and I will make a motion to recess." And you can verify that. It's at fifty-nine forty-eight.
It's basically the same thing, I think.
Okay. And Mr. Flott, you may... Not... Maybe I'm not reflecting it accurately. And if not, let me know and we'll... Anybody else have anything from the June meeting? Next meeting, July sixth. I just had some grammar, but I don't think we need to... Page eight. Bottom paragraph. Halfway through... It's right above, it's a line above the Comprehensive Plan 2020 in there. It says, "And Mr. Schop confirmed that zoning decisions should be made on popularity." Cannot be made. Okay. Anybody else have anything from July sixth? August thirty-first is the next one. I haven't seen it yet. Do you guys have anything from August thirty-first? The only question I had, page three. Two things on this. First paragraph, the third line up from the bottom. "Mr. Cornell related that Chuck is a professional, but that conflict exists, and he does not think you can act into a roles, and that it would be lengthy, would be lengthy process going through the minutes, and that it, they, and they may wish someone else took them..." I'm not sure what that... I just put what?
In the end.
Yeah, okay. And that in, got, okay. And, got, okay. At the bottom of that same page...
Give me just a second on that.
Okay.
I'm going to add, after, where you started that, right before lengthy. It's going to be out lengthy.
Yeah.
Okay? Alright, thank you.
Yeah. Same page, the bottom. You have determine, and it should be detriment.
No, I think those were two. What line were you on?
Uh, towards the bottom, about seven or eight lines up from the bottom. There's two right in a row. Maybe nine lines up.
Just the term two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine.
Ninth line up. Okay. September eleventh is that one? Anybody have anything from September eleventh? Does anyone have anything in here? Alright, September eighteenth. You guys have anything? Alright, the only thing... In here, on the third page, there was some conversation between Redlin Schaefer and Gerber, where he had asked Will who asked him to come to the meeting. And I didn't really see that in there. What's that? No, I, that's what I didn't see. That's what I'm getting at.
Did he run that by me again?
Redlin Schaefer asked Will, something along the lines of, "Who, who asked you to come to these meetings?" If I remember correctly, you guys were all here. No, am I?
He did ask that.
He did, okay.
He did ask if someone asked him to come.
Right, right, right. Okay.
The response?
The response was no. No one asked him. He was paying attention to it on the end.
That's correct. I remember that.
Okay, let me... I'll insert it in there. Because these were, these weren't really put back in there.
Correct.
Okay. Fourth page, and I have a question mark by this, I'm not sure what this meant. Chair Huesman agreed that they could take the minutes.
Where are you at?
Uh, sorry. Second full paragraph. Fourth line up from the bottom, fifth line up from the bottom. Chair Huesman agreed that they could take the minutes. Mr. Schop, this set just proves the first set of minutes was approved.
She wants me to clarify that. We're talking about the planning commission and thread.
Yeah. Okay. I don't know, what's the intention of that statement?
The intention is that the sudden minutes was be handing out to you that night was the second sudden minutes from the planning commission. And she previously, after the previous meeting, that she wanted to know if the planning commission had approved the minutes from their meeting. I think the June fifth meeting where they discussed the zoning test, the planning commission meeting. So I, and at that time, the planning commission had not met. After she asked the question, they met. And I gave a second sudden minutes that said, okay, I gave the regular stuff, approval of the previous minutes. That's what that's supposed to intend. So I needed to clean that up. Is really what you want that to...
Yeah, I think it, it was just a little misleading. I didn't, I read it and did not understand it all within that. Okay. Do you guys have anything else from September eighteen? October five.
I've got one.
Okay.
First paragraph.
What page?
Page nine. Third line up. Mr. Blakeman said, "A second date would be needed to approve findings of fact. It should be a report, finds a factor special use cases." This is text amendment, important recommendation.
Mr. Blakeman said a...
Would be needed to approve a report, any recommendation?
Okay.
Is that what you want to read?
Yeah. Is it appropriate to approve them as a matter of wait till later?
Let me, because there's that one that I have to research and stick it in there. So you're going to want to make sure you read that. So let's come back and...
Okay.
I can, I can tell you, I can highlight or highlight or something so you know what to do.
Yeah, just highlight the change. Okay. Let's kind of go on through those. Um, that's our next order of business.
To review the proposed changes?
Got it.
And I think everybody has a copy of the text amendment application. And I have prepared a summary of proposed changes. I've got two others.
Okay. You guys all have the... The proposed change ordinance in front of you? One. It says the green highlight. The green, the green markups. The cover page is going to be a report. Yours is right on the end, the back page, your back page. Nope, nope, and your left hand is... You got the green markups in it? Yep. Okay. Okay. I guess we'll take these one at a time. Talk about, discuss. I think the consensus of the board in the past, or not in the, but the consensus of anything else that hasn't been proposed to be changed is to leave everything else the way it was, correct?
I'm guessing.
Right. I mean, we're not digging back into anything else that they have proposed to change, to change or amend. Okay, okay, that's... Okay. So, the first section. Part one, section fifty-six dash one. The language associated with hearing facilitators. What, uh... And I guess this kind of, as we discuss this, it kind of leads the path of wherever we take this amendment as it is. And I guess if we, if we don't per se agree with the hearing facilitator, there's probably no reason to have it in the definitions. I guess would be my thought on it. I'm not...
I don't know, we should come back to that.
Okay. It's fine. Uh, looks like procedures would be another one that uses a hearing facilitator. Alright, let's look at sec, the third one. Fifty-six, six ninety-two.
I might make a quick comment?
Yep.
Okay. In the past, for special use permits, generally they are decided on by the ZBA, except for wind farms. The change here is to add solar farms to require the county board to make the final decision as opposed to the ZBA. That's the change that's proposed.
Or is it?
It's number three.
And it's not even in this wind ordinance?
Give it to me, the solar ordinance, I just forgot to see it in this part of the ordinance. What, the first two pages you have here, the second page, this page here. First two pages are not part of the ordinance, they're part of the general...
Got it.
Generation, so you're not, you're not looking at the wind ordinance that's here. It's just inserting the wind, and then on the backside, the wind and solar regards to putting it in the special use procedures. So it's not, I'm going to get to the next page and we actually start the wind ordinance issues, okay?
Okay. So section fifty-six, six ninety-two is technically not a part of the wind ordinance, but rather procedures?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
Alright. So we still stand by, we need to come back to two. But section three. This procedure. Okay. So it's that last change at the bottom that includes and solar farms?
Correct.
So basically, all that ask is for, uh... The county board to ultimately decide on the ability of solar farms.
That'd be correct.
What you guys' feelings or thoughts on that?
I don't think we ever discussed that, but that's okay to me.
Okay. I would agree that testimony does not exist either for or against that. But it was outlined as a change.
It was previously discussed, yeah.
Okay. Okay. Did you, did you find James, or did you?
I'm looking through several of them.
Oh, okay, okay.
Is this right, it's at the bottom of page, unnumbered page? Fifty-six, six ninety-two procedures, the one you're looking at?
That's right here.
Just the one that was in green. Okay. It's right there.
And solar farms?
Right, I was looking...
So are you, are you questioning?
No, I'm not. Well, I'm just asking you guys what your thoughts are. I, I mean, I'm, I'm okay with, I, I feel like that's the...
I think it should be part of the...
That's the natural process, just like wind farms go through this board and then to the county board.
Yep.
Okay. And that's, that's been the procedure. So, solar farms are just kind of one of these new ones. So the consensus is we're okay with that?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Alright. Alright, the next one. Section fifty-six dash six twelve. Appears to be page three. Okay. Definition of WEX projects to set forth is a collection of WEXs and substations, and the definition to be modified to include hereafter referred to as project or WEX project. Probably just a nomenclature thing, I feel like.
That just cleans up some of the...
It cleans up because it was worded different ways. As you mentioned, the ordinance wasn't always worded the same way. If you put it up here, it makes it so it's consistent with the definition going through as well.
I got no problem with that whatsoever.
Okay. Alright. General consensus is everybody's good with that?
Yep.
Alright. Alright. Five. Here's on page seven. Round Grove, Dwight, Nevada, Broughton, Union, Odell, and Sullivan townships only. The setback is changed from six times the height of the WEX towers, or thirty-two fifty, whichever is greater, to three point seven five times the height of the WEX tower, or sixteen hundred feet, whichever is greater for many primary structure. Primary structure capitalized, that is defined. It is defined. Okay.
I think sixteen hundred should be sixteen forty. I think we made those changes when we went through it, wasn't it?
Well, it came to sixteen hundred. So you need to discuss if you want to make it sixteen forty or not, yes.
We, didn't we discuss that?
No. This is your time to make an official...
But no, didn't we, I thought that was already kind of the consensus when we went through it the first time, the very first time.
I understand, but this...
It's sixteen forty down below the next one.
This came too, because this is the way it was on the refer end, so. The sixteen hundred was on the line.
Alright, let's everybody's...
So the correct, the correct wording should be sixteen forty. So if we choose to change that, we can change that at this time.
Correct. Yeah. Correct.
That would be a proposal of mine. I agree.
There's no minor change as part of that same paragraph. Primary structure is to be capitalized.
Right.
Correct. As well as...
Capitalize three times in the top, WEX is a WEX in front of tower, the top one, two, so.
I also have my notes that we also were considering at least...
At least, yeah.
My notes. At least six times, at least thirty-two fifty, at least sixteen forty.
Is that your recommendation?
That was in my notes that I thought it was at the time, so I'm saying, yes, it's in mine.
I had it down too.
So, WEX tower will have at least thirty-two hundred fifty feet, whichever is greater to...
Instead of or, it'd be at least.
Okay.
No, after or, it would be...
After or, yeah.
Yeah. And whichever's greater to at least three point seven times the height. And then or at least sixteen hundred forty-two?
Sixteen forty, sixteen forty.
I know it's sixteen forty, but.
Yeah, yeah, at least two.
Yeah. Okay.
I, I actually.
Does that make sense?
Later on in the paragraph, did you have a note as well, to the, in front of the at least one point one oh times? I had an absence there too, that I.
That's fine with me, if you wanna do that.
I guess the ultimate question here is.
It's just wording.
Right. The, uh. The greater question at hand is.
Do we change the setback?
Do we apply it to six townships? Do we feel the evidence has overwhelmed us to change it within those six townships? Seven.
Seven townships.
I don't.
I do.
Alright.
I don't have a problem with it, I guess I hold the, the, um, vote as substantial.
Say that again?
The referendum.
You, you feel that, that's, okay, okay. And, and I, I guess I'm, I'm with you guys on, on the no side, I, um. I guess here's where we get, we, we get to the, to a situation here where if we clean the language up and, and we push this through. Personally, and, and this is hard, because now I'm the chair and I have to try to, but I'm, I'm gonna pretend like I'm just a member, because that would be a sticking point for me and I wouldn't say, I wouldn't vote no on the whole amendment, if that were applied to it. So, that holds up the process.
Right.
I, I don't know, I don't know exactly how.
Procedurally, do we vote on each one of these changes or separately or?
We discuss each one individually. And then, we don't, you don't take a vote tonight, because we don't have the documents ready. But we sort of take a straw poll as to whichever way you're going, and that was gonna be my question. If I understand right now, three of you basically would delete this one altogether, right, there would be no change.
I, I would.
And I just don't understand.
Is, is that procedurally correct to delete a.
Portion of it.
Portion of it when we're considering the whole?
That's why I'm asking, is do we have to take the changes as a whole, yes or no, or each change?
Well, you ultimately end up with one document, it has, it has what it has in terms of changes.
Right.
Okay.
But if, do we have to take, because, because the changes are in different sections all the way through and are for different reasons all the way through, do we have, again, I'm, I came in, in the middle of this.
It's alright, do, keep talking, we're, we're gonna talk about this, because it's important, because this could deadlock the whole process.
Right, and that's exactly why I'm asking this, is do we. Are we able to vote on each change separately by session, or is it all or nothing?
Totally nothing.
We have to vote ultimately on the text amendment, all or nothing. But, but as we go through, we can eliminate, we can, we can modify, we can change, we can get something that everybody agrees with. We can, we can work through the process to an agreeable fashion.
Okay.
You know.
Keeping in mind that this is a recommendation, this is not a change.
Absolutely.
It's a recommendation to the board.
To the county board.
Right.
And it takes an affirmative vote of four of you for the report of the recommendation.
Yes.
Okay.
But a no recommendation.
Might not mean anything.
Wouldn't mean anything either.
The county board could still vote it, put through.
Just backing up, just to say for those of you that are opposed to this, are you okay with the at least being added to that, since we have a couple of changes there?
Oh, yes.
Okay.
I guess I, it's my opinion, I hope, I don't think that we can take, delete an applicant's desires in a text amendment, it's either you approve it or you don't approve it. Well, I, I, I guess I'm struggling with how, how we can take bits and pieces of it.
We always do.
Yeah, that's what you did last time.
We always do, we took, we took what, which party wanted.
But that was, that was on the whole, rewriting the whole text amendment, this is.
That's kinda what we're doing.
Is that enough section of that?
I guess I don't look at it that way, I, I look at it as that they made an application to change, to amend these parts of our amendment, and that's what we are to consider. I don't know that we are supposed to tear it apart and say, okay, we don't like this, we're gonna delete that out.
Okay, so.
So, you leave, if you wanna change the verbiage, like the least and, and some of those little things, and sixteen forty versus sixteen hundred, I, I'm, I'm. I guess I, I see that, but I just don't see how you can say, okay, three of, three of us out of the five, and I decided to delete that.
But when it comes time to a vote, then it's gonna be a voting on an entire document.
It's gonna be a year and a half.
Right.
Is that not correct?
Yes, I mean, it's an, it's an all or nothing vote.
So do we look for common ground to get it through as an affirmative vote to send it to the county board as an affirmative vote? Or do we take this whole thing for face value and vote on it as it is, and, and if it goes, if it, if it goes no, let them override it? I mean, is that, that would be what's your.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's the way it's always been, hasn't it?
Hmm, no.
No.
No, I don't think, I, I don't feel like it has.
I guess I don't look at this as the, the same as the first, when we completely rewrote the whole ordinance. I look at it a little differently, I guess it's not, we already have the place, we went through all that.
Right.
We worked through all the different languages and said this is what we think. And I think they took it all, they didn't make any changes to it. Or did they, the county board?
They did.
Did they make some?
Yeah.
I don't even know what those changes are.
Well, you took out the hearing facilitator, they put the hearing facilitator back in.
These are the changes, aren't they?
So the, the, the.
For this one.
So why is this one back in, I thought it's not in, that's why we're putting it in here?
Different section.
So it's in a.
Different section, different section.
Different section.
This one is the definition section of the zoning ordinance generally, as opposed to a definition section to the wind farms. It's in the wind farm definition section, but it's not in the general definition. This was proposed for internal consistency. That's my understanding. Chuck, if you have.
So this is, this is, this is completely different than what we discussed originally when we. Is it all encompassing?
I mean, at some point you get to, you gotta have something you're gonna vote on, and you're either gonna one document, okay? With either this proposal with your changes or without this proposal. You have others, you have, okay, the couples that those are okay.
Right, right.
Alright.
Or the changes that the evidence solidifies and supports.
So what evidence you have that doesn't support the hearing facilitator?
We, we aren't to that one yet, though.
Yeah.
Right, but in, on the terms of hearing facilitator, we didn't necessarily hear any that wouldn't support, but did we really hear any that will support? I think we did.
Okay, then getting back to this one, because it's simply what, what we're talking about, because I'm sorry, I jumped back. So what's, what's the. What's the criteria that we, we wanna delete those, those towns, those townships?
Townships. Uh, the application of spot zoning.
It's that it's spot zoning.
Well, that's for our discussion.
Well, yeah, I mean, you, if you wanna go that route, halt spot. Well, but spot, but spa is specifically an application, somebody, somebody comes and specifically asks us to change it for them for that purpose, for whatever it may be, this is, this is a referendum that seven, six, seven?
Seven.
Seven townships voted in favor of, by majority, or some of a majority, or when it was close enough, that's.
Eight townships voted that way.
And there was a.
They didn't include the other.
Right.
Right.
Right, right, but, and, and, and a point that I've always made through this process is, when does popular vote determine zoning changes? And I don't feel anywhere in any comprehensive plans, any moral or ethical stance, that popular vote should determine zoning changes.
Well, I wasn't the one to put it on the referendum either, I mean, that, that was a.
Right.
A decision of ours.
Right, right, but, I, I mean, can you?
Somebody thought it was okay to do that, apparently. They have a lot of legal advice, I'm sure.
That may be, I, I can't, I, I, I wasn't there. But I, I don't know where, anywhere in the comprehensive plan, or anywhere in the zoning regulations that says you are able to modify zoning by having a popular vote. I think there's other factors that have to, you have to consider, land use, development, uh, the, the best interest of, of neighbors, the health, welfare, safety, all of those considerations.
I agree, I agree with that, but it is also in the use. As partly.
Okay, I, and I, I will agree to disagree with you on that, I, and it's okay, I mean, it, it's all for conversation's sake.
What was, what was your definition of deadlock, you must have the word deadlock here. You mean that we just simply don't agree, or, what do you mean by deadlock?
Well, it, what will happen is, okay, let's say we. We're already short a member, and you have to have four affirmative votes to get anything to go. So, if, if we, if we put this in, my card's on the table. I think these guys' cards on the table, if this stays in, chances are they're gonna vote no on the, on the rest of the text amendment. This is probably enough of a sticking point, so at that point, we've, we've, we've went through this whole process to have a a text amendment sent up to the county board that we've actually shot down, this board shot down.
That's okay.
Okay. I mean, it's a little different than, than our normal operating procedure, we kinda try to find common ground and, and try to make it work out and send it up, and usually there's decent support from the board as a whole, feeling that we sent up a good product.
Well, don't forget last time that you completely disallowed what was presented and came up with your own alternative.
You must have done what?
Alternative version.
And it was.
I think it was a compilation, I, I wouldn't say we disallowed anything, I think we, we, we looked at evidence from both sides and, and really blended them.
It was a compilation, that was, I would agree with that. Well, that's, that's, that's irrelevant, I shouldn't have.
We would decide more than.
I'm disappointed to think you feel that way, I mean, we spent a lot of time on that.
I know.
Okay. I'm sure this question is in the evidence, because um, the former ZBA member talked about it. You guys came up with the thirty-two fifty based on a lot of hearings, and it was basically a safety issue, am I correct?
Uh, several considerations, there was, there was the safety, there was the noise concerns, um, is.
Okay, health and safety.
Health and safety, yeah, uh, the pollution control board statutes couldn't be met, as you get much closer to there, uh, in, in most cases, um. There was lesser impact on potential property values with real estate that was presented, um. Just the general safety factors were presented, there, there were several things over twenty nights presented for and against from both sides, from, from the wind farm side and, and, and the general public.
Right, and, to me, evidence was presented here that shows that, you know, and it's actually later in the thing, the movement of fifty feet at twenty-five hundred feet can really impact health and safety, let alone coming all the way down to sixteen hundred feet.
Well, I didn't hear that.
He was, um, he was talking about when they were about the twenty-five hundred feet down at the PC wind farms, and how, he's, he's got the whole.
There's an exhibit.
He had an exhibit showing how the different distances, fifty hundred feet.
I tried to hear the noise?
Yes.
Sound signature.
Sound, yeah, at certain levels.
Yeah.
But he, he showed how, to me, it showed.
Well, I think the, the ordinance says they have to, to comply with the I C, what is it, the?
I P C B?
The road board standards.
I P C B, yeah.
You have U C L, U C L C exhibit two, I think.
Right, yeah. But that's, you know, to me, if we're coming all the way down to sixteen hundred feet, that leaves no room for air on.
Right.
A lot of those, and that's exactly why I went with.
I mean, this is controversial, as you know.
This is controversial.
And it not just divided the art board, but it divides the county board too, so.
It does. So, the question ultimately lies is, do we?
I guess the question that, that we have to decide as a board, do we delete something out of the application or not? That's what my, my question is, is that something we wanna do?
Do we delete it or do we try to modify it? Instead of the sixteen forty, do we try to give them something? Say twenty-five hundred, twenty-seven hundred, I, I don't know, I'm throwing, that's why I'm trying to ask is, because I, I think I understand what you're trying to say is, that we can present what we want to present, as long as it's voted on and agreed upon, it's sent up as a whole. But we can make changes all the way throughout.
You can make changes, and those changes include elimination of the whole provision, if you seduce them.
Right.
You did it right.
Okay.
Right, right, that would be. The only thing that I, I would say to that is, if, if we change it to a lesser than, than applied to the other townships, I still feel like ultimately we're up, up there cutting them out, and, and once we give a little bit, we forfeited something.
Okay, but you were the one that said that it was a compo, I, I.
Absolutely, absolutely, yeah.
So I'm trying to see if there's any way to find some common ground.
So what's the, what's the setbacks in that area now?
There still has to be a basis for a compromise, I mean, you just can't pick twenty-seven hundred feet out.
Chuck, what's, what's the setbacks there now, the wind farms?
It would be whatever, thirty-two fifty, unless.
It would be the ones that are built.
No, the ones that are built.
It, it was under, it was under the original twelve hundred, but not over at twelve hundred, most of them are at fourteen hundred or more.
That was the least they could be.
They need to meet the noise regulation, so they couldn't be as close as twelve hundred.
So you have a wind farm in that area that is at twelve hundred feet?
Okay.
But.
Two wrongs don't make a right.
Let's always remember that all of these are wavable.
That's.
The ordinance allows, and, and we did, I, I feel like we did a good job making sure that they were wavable. If they wanna put it closer, that's the inherent risk they take, and, and it's out there, and if it turns into a cash grab for somebody, I can't help. if it turns into a cash grab for somebody, I can't help that. But we've allowed it by allowing the 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 special situations, the whatever. Granted, they're still gonna have to comply with the noise ordinance. But.
Right, right.
Yeah. I I mean, I feel like we're not eliminating any of them in the grand scheme of things. Your neighbors are just gonna have to be okay with you possibly affecting their property value, their health, their safety, their welfare. They're gonna have to basically sign off on that and waive waive it and say, in lieu of this, we will let you do this.
Well, nobody's gonna be convinced to to change their vote on that issue, so we might as well.
Okay, I I think a lot of them though are gonna be. Okay. Are you guys okay with letting that one die for a little bit and come back?
Okay.
So let's just before procedure lies.
Right.
On each point, are we gonna take a straw poll? It's three to two every time. I mean, what's?
Well, if you do that.
We really need Joan here.
You know, if you do that, then I could. If it's three, two across the board, I can just about pick which which way it's gonna go. Then I could come back with alternative versions that you could vote on if it's just gonna be that, it's that consistency all the way through. It wasn't like that last time, 'cause it was all over the place last time.
Right.
And I'm just sort of thinking off the top of my head, trying to figure out a way to break the impasse and get to a point where we can prepare something and guys can vote on it.
So you would like to see us go through this procedure in all the points? That I'd say?
No, I don't think that's.
No.
I think you said it's gonna be three to do it all, and what's?
No, no, I I don't, I I don't think that's the case. I I I don't think that. I mean, I I think that.
I don't think so either.
For me personally, that's a huge sticking point. I mean, uh, you know, the next one.
That's pretty much the main part of the, this is the main part of the.
You're right, you're right.
Yeah.
So the next one's gonna fall under the same we should come back to.
Exactly, exactly.
Okay. Let's see, let's let's look at seven on page eight.
Seven.
Uh, point seven on page eight.
Oh.
Sorry. Setback for transmission told one hundred and fifty feet from any portion of a primary structure unless located in public right of way. And then can be reduced with the approval of public entity and property owner. Owner can waive the setback.
This is the one we had kind of ocean.
Okay.
What was the setback?
Fifty.
Well, current ordinance, current ordinance is a hundred and fifty.
For any portion of a portion of the.
We're not changing that.
We're just trying to change the approval and the wording on the approval was.
If it's in the public.
You just rewrite it.
Rewrite, do the redo the repart, so it reinstated.
So that one's okay.
That one's okay.
You guys, that one's okay?
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
It needs to study words not a little bit from here to one of the planning, maybe what the planning commission recommended too, so.
What's their recommendation look like?
I thought the green was, but the planning commission.
No.
That's what the egg and zoning committee proposed.
Then it was reviewed by the planning commission after it was.
Did you find it? You know what, we'll move on to eight. We'll just keep talking. Did you find it?
I didn't find it. It's it's not.
Okay, all right.
It's one of those problems over there.
Okay, our point number eight, page ten, uh, looks like we um, are asking to move from fifty to a hundred feet. And we're gonna uh, put applicant owner operator in lieu of company. You guys' feelings or thoughts on that? Guess my thought would be as long as it still complies with I P C B, if we move it fifty, we move it a hundred. You know, it still has to ultimately comply with that regulation.
It's okay.
You guys okay with that?
Yeah.
All right.
Rich?
Yeah?
Yeah.
All right. Page ten, do a little capitalization on
We agree to that.
light kind as well as owner operator.
Yeah.
Pretty sure we can all agree on that. All right. All right. Page twelve. Okay, this one is, I see just a few small contour maps, add intervals that doesn't really show up here. It's just a nomenclature. But the last one, the owner of the receiving land may waive compliance with local setback points pertaining to I P C B regulations for the owner's property.
Says being waiver.
A waiver to say that it it doesn't necessarily have to be a hundred and fifty feet from the foundation, but rather at the foundation. So they're they're willing to waive that, any compliance with that. And and that would be altogether their choice.
I had my notes that we were going to change setback to local one fifty feet measuring points.
I think that's another planning commission on that. If if you wanted to go through these, take a quick break, let me look that stuff up and then we come back.
That's another one of those that they were on their nominations.
Okay. Local receiving points or whatever we needed. Okay. Okay, let's come back to ten. All right, let's look at the eleventh one. Page thirteen. Just a few word additions in there, you guys. Capitalization, owner operator. Everybody okay with that? Okay. All right, let's take a.
I just, we've got one more. Mr. Luke Hand mentioned placing one of my words upfront in the definition. I want to look look back, worrying up in minutes and I'll bring it, take a few minutes and let me get all this stuff up. I know what I'm looking for.
Let's take like ten minutes. So I got thirty. So let's come back at page forty and we'll get going again.
That page from your county. If you're committed to changing the language from the.
Yes, I do.
Okay. Page, the first one in that section that's part of the other, we can look at number two. It applies to page eight. And um, it reads unless approved in writing by the proper township, county, state, and or municipal road authority and the property owner. I, that's pretty much. Pretty close to what was there before. Are you guys okay with it? Okay with the?
Yeah.
The zone, regional planning commissions change. You're okay with that? Okay. All right, so that settles that one. All right, page twelve, this was that receiving point or measuring point. Um, changes that land which the owner of the receiving land may waive compliance with the local one hundred and fifty feet measuring points requirement pertaining to the I P C B regulations for the owner's property. You guys feel that is a worthwhile change?
You have no problem with it? Did you find it a little better?
I would agree. You guys okay with those?
Yeah, I see what you're saying.
Yeah.
Yeah. It just real specifically says that hundred and fifty for receiving. Okay, all right, we're back to looks like the townships and the facilitator.
I don't recall any, um, buddy opposing in the end of the testimony, the hearing facilitator.
Okay.
We did really didn't discuss it a lot here.
Right.
And I think the first time we sent it to the county board, we determined that actually we we couldn't see a need for it.
And I I agree with that analysis of we we didn't, it, there wasn't enough savings associated with it. And we felt that we uh, had to do the other hearings so we could do those just just like we and and I guess adding a person's side, I felt like it was a better way to include the public where they didn't feel intimidated by the facilitator that might, you know, we 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 left them with a little latitude as they testified. Yeah, might have added some time to the meetings. But people could come there and speak their piece and they felt like they were just amongst the community instead of legal counsel running meetings. That's my two cents.
What do they ask for, legal counsel?
Hollywood fuck. Or maybe just a penny.
I I guess, um, my feeling's on a facilitator outside unbiased. We all have our biases, obviously, on this board and what side we are on this.
Right.
And if you hire somebody in from the outside that's unbiased, that conducts the meeting, you don't get a bias either way. Depending whoever may be the chairman, acting chairman.
Sure.
At a hearing. That that's the only upside that I see to it. I agree with you, there's no savings or maybe but that in my mind, when I think about that, I wouldn't have a problem with it because of that. You have somebody unbiased outside of the area conducting the meeting that's doesn't have the local politics.
Can we ensure that that's fulfilled? Can we ensure that that premise, the basic premise that you explained to me, unbiased, you know, automatically the county pays them. There's a bias. You 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 know what I mean?
Yeah.
Well, the county pays all of us too. We might have some bias. I.
Yeah, you can't get, you can't get away from some bias in any situation.
Somebody's gotta pay him. Uh, we used, the county used, uh, it wasn't called a hearing facilitator. Uh, the county out of Chuck for sighting of landfills.
Hearing officer.
Hearing officer. And I guess it it's kind of the same kind of thing. He just moved things along uh, efficiently and it seemed to work in that situation. And I think that's where county board members came up with uh, this idea was that it just seemed like a really efficient process and cut cut the time down on it. I think we met five days or something like that. He was here and gone. I think that's probably where this came from.
As you must have been involved with that process, did you?
Back then?
Yeah.
Are you talking about the?
I'm talking about, so your experience with the landfill.
Mm-hmm.
Site. Was the community involved?
Yeah.
Okay.
There was a hearing held. Witnesses were sworn, testified.
Actually, it could have probably answered some of the questions that we had earlier on procedurally.
Yeah, we were kind of in uncharted territory all the way around.
Right, but have one person said, saying what the standard is, could probably help move things. I'm not sure. I I don't see a problem with it. I understand there's been no evidence really for it and none against it. I don't see a problem with having a hearing facilitator.
Okay.
And then Mike, I would also probably add that, you know, someone's been on this board quite a while, quite a long time. We know how things are supposed to be, but I'm not planning on being on this thing forever. I think you are either. Any of you guys after this, even just after this one, but whoever may be on it will will be uncharted territory for ever, for any new member. So when you, if you have a complete turnover of this board and you're gonna ask the acting chairman to facilitate a hearing on a wind farm and knows nothing, absolutely nothing about doing it, you rely, Mr. Blakeman may not even be here the next wind farm. But my point, my 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 point is, I guess, try to try to, having a facilitator that is familiar with conducting those types of hearings is beneficial.
And and I see that point. And you don't have to sell it all to me. I mean, know that we have to sell it to each other. I mean, you know, it's it's, uh, I respect the premise of the Open Meetings Act and feel that that's a very important part of the process. And and I would never want to forfeit any of that by having a hearing facilitator that might be involved in the day-to-day interactions and dealings so that it's not presented in the public forum. I mean, I can say with all truth that I rolled into those meetings in in Forest and Fairberry stone cold every night. You know, I mean, Chuck was not calling me saying, and Tom was not calling me with, you know, here's what you're gonna do tonight. No. It's okay, we're gonna talk about it and we're gonna talk about it at the meeting. And that might add some time to it, but I feel that it gave the public the true inside meeting, what was really happening, you know. If something happened outside of the meeting, I wasn't involved. I, you know.
So are you, are you saying if we had a facilitator hired, that that would bring that diamond amic into it?
It may. I don't know. I mean, if if that's their whole role is to expedite the process, are they gonna be trying to do that?
I think they'd probably be really professional and be really careful with that. You you could have the same thing with a different chair. Doing the same kind of things that you mentioned. Uh, because you didn't do that, doesn't mean that the next person will do that.
Absolutely. Guys, you have any thoughts?
I went, I went to all but two of those hearings. I thought they ran them very well.
With regards to?
With with the hearings, a year ago, the the first.
Pleasant Ridge hearings.
Pleasant Ridge hearings.
Okay, okay.
And the only thing I would want to know is, is the hearing facilitator complete control or are they working with the 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 chairperson or? I guess it says right here on the end of it that the the applicant shall reimburse the county for the fees, so the money's not a question.
And the county would cut the money from the wind farm that you have to pay for anyways.
To pay for facilitator, so I'm not, I'm not coming up on it.
Okay.
I liked our first decision when we sent it up, 'cause I still didn't see the need to, we had counsel, we had.
I I I mean, I'm I'm, I would say that they're they're hired to run the meeting, but the the chair and the board has the ultimate, obviously, vote in decision-making. I, I, I mean, I'm, I'm, I would say that they're, they're hired to run the meeting, but the, the chair and the board has the ultimate, obviously, vote in decision-making. Is that, is that where you're, you're going with?
Regardless.
The facilitator just have a role in the meeting.
It makes no vote, absolutely zero vote, only is there to present the.
Has no adjudicator.
Right, 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 right.
Other than willing on request for continuances, procedural matters, admission, admissibility of evidence, and the propriety, propriety of any arguments.
And the findings of fact would still be done by the ZBA.
Yeah.
He would decide what goes in and what they say.
Yeah, I understand that one.
Are you guys adverse to any language that we might add to, to this? That says that we, there's the part, the consent of the county board, but what happens if we, do I want to say fathom? You know, we might have two options. Uh, which one do we feel like we could work better with? Is that the way to go? We're gonna be working with them for twenty meetings. We need to work with somebody that, that we all can get along with. I mean, is that too far of a stretch to ask that we're involved in the selection process?
And how do you decide who gets hired then?
Yeah.
Well, I, I, I feel like.
What if the county was hired?
Cause the state's attorney right, in this, it says the state's attorney. State's attorney has, mm, really nothing either way. I mean, you're looking at an outside lawyer, picking an outside lawyer for this process.
The county board hires us.
Okay.
Hires us, it's the same, same principle.
Okay.
Who?
Uh, as we look at the attrition or the, the state's attorneys, um, how involved is the state's attorney with the county board?
He's their legal representative. Probably occasionally farms it out like myself and sometimes it's his, yeah, his, his decision.
Right. And we elect, we elect the state's attorney and.
So where do we have what, is it three, two for facilitator or four, four, nine or what?
I, I, I can, I, I can be kind of swayed on, on, on the hearing facilitator. I, I mean, I, I, I feel like it's important that we can work with this person is what I feel like.
Can you write that in, when you're writing this stuff, it just makes it more complicated with an addendum or something that the, uh, the ZBA would like to also help vet that person, but rest of it.
Well, it says it's selected by the state's attorney and the county zoning administrator and appointed by the chairman of the county board with consent of the county board. If you wanted to put something in there. You know, appointed by the county, chairman of the county board with the consent of, I don't know, ZBA, ZBA chairman. Instead of the county board. I don't know how, how that would work.
Right, um. By involving the state's attorney in this, what, what role do they?
Can I, I think the purpose of that is because you hired somebody that has some legal background, so your state's attorney, does that make sure that? A good legal background will do that.
And also the state's attorney doesn't necessarily deal with the wind farm thing. So here we have an elected attorney, elected by the people.
Right.
Basically, appointing or recommending somebody, this is totally outside of his area of expertise. You know, procedural things like this, state's attorney, kind of, was basically, they prosecute criminals. They don't necessarily.
Who has that expertise if he doesn't?
Well, what I'm saying is, because, he's basically unbiased by definition.
Okay, there's a legal reason why, because by law, state's attorney is the attorney for the county on all matters.
Okay.
All right, that's why that's written that way, all right? Unless, or is designated, unless he delegates that to somebody else, he's, he's it. So you can't.
Right, I got no.
When it comes to lawyers, you, you can't, can't go beyond the state's attorney without his permission or his consent. That's why, that's why it's written that way.
So I'm just, I'm gonna say, basically, he's gonna be unbiased in, at this level for these hearings because it's really not part of his.
But.
But it is, I understand.
Factically, what, what's gonna happen is the state's attorney will conduct an investigation, but he'll do some checking, he'll find out who has knowledge in these areas, somebody with experience, somebody with a good reputation, and then he'll go, go out and select those people, that person, probably. Okay, and that's, that's how you do stuff like that.
That's what I'm saying, I don't, I don't have.
And he'll make sure it's not anybody local or anybody who has any connections or to the extent reasonably possible, no biases.
So are you good with it as written?
If, if, if we feel like the state's attorney can be that vetting body that can take out the biases, then, then I'm okay.
Well, he's elected too, so he has to, he has to think about that, but every decision he makes.
I mean, I do feel like the whole idea of it is forfeiting our capabilities or our abilities or whatever the case might be. And I think that was our original thought as we went through.
But you're still gonna be able to ask questions, you're still gonna control the hearings to the extent that you're gonna prepare the findings of fact and the ultimate rendition that gets made to the county board.
Exactly. So what do we need him for?
To, to, to.
I understand.
To, to, to run the hearing, to, you know, to take, take into consideration objections, to schedule, do all the kinds of stuff that needs to be done when running a hearing.
I understand. And I don't have a problem, I think the state's attorney probably should be the one to appoint if, if that's the way it happens.
So are we, are you okay?
Okay.
Okay.
So okay with one and two?
One, two we got to talk about here.
Two we have to talk.
Two go to your minutes on August thirty first, page four.
August thirty first minutes that he, we just got our minute packet.
What would we look at?
Fifty lines up from the bottom. Where the UCLC attorney is questioning, my stuff, a lot of confusing language in here. Which, regarding session fifty six dash six ninety two, if you can read that, hearing facilitator language.
Fifty six, six ninety two, the hearing facilitator language, and he read it to be for any special use the county board intended. Though Mr. Schupf said that was not the intent. Mr. Schupf agreed that it was not the intent. Mr. Lucans looked at ways to make it cleaner, suggesting that the word accepted, except be moved to after the word systems and that would clean up their concern. All right, so let's take a look at just exactly what we're getting.
All right.
Certain re- perspulsion use.
Time out. Tell us where you're at.
I'm on the green, second page of the green.
Okay, second page of the, the text amendments, it's the green pages, which line?
Green, the green area.
Okay.
Cross out except at the beginning.
Okay.
Start with four, so four special use applications pertaining to wind energy conversion systems.
Conversion system.
Except, appearing to set or maybe, so except goes in there and except the hearing facilitator may preside over the green, as I think.
Except or.
Except.
Be ex.
Yes. And just, just for clarification, the county board will make the ultimate decision for, uh, electrical too, but it won't be subject to a hearing facilitator, that process.
Solar farm.
Solar farm, right.
Solar farm, sorry.
Okay.
Sorry, Tom, what, what did you just?
I'm just saying that the hearing facilitator will only be used for wind farms. They will not be used.
For solar farms.
For solar farms, even though the county board will make the ultimate decision with regard to solar, solar farms, just like it does for wind farms.
Well, can they be?
I mean, you guys will run the hearing.
Well, can they be?
Can they be what?
Can they be used for solar farms?
Yes.
A hearing facilitator.
Not the way it's worded.
Not the way it's worded, no.
Maybe we want them to be.
Well, the intent was to limit it just to the wind farms. That's the recommend, I mean, that's, that's where the county board is opposing.
You can take me, I don't know. You like me, you don't like me. Ah, okay, back to where we're at. Uh, four special use applications pertaining pertaining to wind energy conversion systems, except. A, a hearing facilitator may preside over hearing.
Just take it out.
Yeah, it reads much better.
Yeah, let's just take accept out, yeah.
It reads, it's, that's how it reads.
Okay, for special use applications pertaining to wind energy conversion systems, a hearing facilitator may preside over hearings resulting from the citing approval application. Okay, is that a worthwhile clarification? Okay, okay.
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 Yeah, number five. Eight, five, eight, seven.
Six.
Eight, seven.
Yep. This is a hard one. I, 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 I probably feel like my personal opinion is I'm pretty stuck on it. I think there's others that are pretty stuck on it. I, I feel like those stuck on this and maybe stuck on hearing facilitator, I feel like we, we, we did hang the carrot out there. We, we kind of give in a little bit. I, um, you know, I, do I expect you guys to give in? I don't, I, you guys have your own vote.
It's, it's three, two.
It's three, two. Uh, you're right. Um. You know, do we, I feel like any change from what the whole ordinance is, is a, is an application of special zoning to that area, which I don't agree with. I personally don't feel that the county has compelled me in any way, shape or form to vote for this. I mean, they give me a, they tell me the density, population density is, is less, makes it easier for a waiver. They don't tell me what the density was. They don't tell me how many people per square mile. They never told me that to compare to other places. They said the farmland is less productive. I challenge that you have any of those farmers come on in here and we'll ask them, hey, they told me that your farmland is less productive there. They're all gonna tell you that they get two hundred and fifty bushel a acre. So, I don't know, uh. That's, that's my thoughts. I feel that it, it, there is some safety, uh, issues associated with it. I feel like there's a detrimental effect to surrounding property owners that potentially wouldn't have a decision in, in any of the site. And maybe a small five acre landowner that's gonna have, have decreased property value on account of a turbine that might be too close. That's my logic behind it. You guys are welcome to interject, you guys are welcome to, or we can, we can say, I guess ultimately we could say the three to two consensus, we say no, and whether the process could even, I, we, 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 we probably couldn't vote because we don't have findings of facts, but we could pretty well.
Report.
Right.
So would you want to delete it? Is that what you're suggesting?
I think that's usually where you go, it gets deleted.
It gets deleted.
Yeah, I think that.
Unless you come up with a different number, I don't know, I don't know if there's any basis in the record.
Yeah, a different number percent back?
Yeah.
We sent a different number, actually, the first time. We sent it at, up at three thousand on the lead and they changed it to thirty two fifty. Which, which made sense to me because that's what I wanted to do in the first place. We all agreed on three thousand.
Right.
As far as I'm concerned, you know, why is the quality of life more important in one part of the county than the other part of the county? Why is health issues more important than, is it all about money? If it's all about money, I think we're wrong.
Because the K don't be waived.
The, uh, county zoning committee said, uh, you know, they gave us, what, three reasons? They want to close a gap in the, uh, wind turbine farms. I have that, that might be a reason, maybe.
And it's still gonna be closed by using waivers.
Right. Uh, naturally, the, the production of the land was, was, but there was, if you went by the boat, which.
We did everything except what you need to do.
I think the.
Can I, can we just reset now or you need something?
You know what? Can I talk?
Bill, let him talk.
Sure, go ahead.
All right.
That'd be too long, but.
Go ahead.
Takes as long as you need.
All right. My point was if you go by the, the popular vote, you know, it, it wasn't overwhelmed, the popular vote wasn't overwhelmed. So there's still people in these parts of the counties that voted no. One of them was at sixty percent, maybe two of them, and the rest of them were under that. So I believe that we, we should, you know, and I think you say it's not spot zoning, but you got, uh, one of these that, they're completely ignoring you and then they go, yes, ready to function. Now you include them all, you. Uh, that, that's where I'm, that's why I don't agree with this and I don't agree with, uh, what's putting up.
Well, I guess I would say in respect to both of them, I believe in the process and how we function. It's three to two, so we delete it.
Okay.
Send it on.
Same thing for number five?
But just, you're, you're, you are okay once again, add the word at least in those areas that wasn't there before.
But if you're delete it.
No.
Yeah, I'm okay with, yeah.
You mean, you still have at least before the six times and at least before the thirty two fifty and at least before.
So what you, so, so you're saying we need to put in thirty two, so sixteen forty?
No, it's already in there. I'm just.
And at least in.
Oh, sure, yeah.
Yes.
And the likewise would apply to the condition six.
Yep.
We're sorry, got it at least.
We're in the same boat there, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Those are the only two that were in conflict on.
So my sheet summary of proposed changes, I have X through condition five and condition six.
Except for the, rather than the at least.
Right, and the primary structure capitalized some dramatic issues.
So when you get this back, I maybe just, maybe we left in there, crossed out just to show you that it was there, crossed out just to clarify.
Strike two, a little strike.
And the at least goes in the number six too, right?
It's already there.
It's already there. It's already there. Doesn't matter consistency.
Okay, all right.
Okay. Anything else we want to add or discuss or?
Motion to recess.
All right.
No, we need, we need, well, we need to figure out when we're gonna, because the next time we're gonna come back with a reported renovation, you guys are gonna have to.
And then vote on the whole thing.
And vote on the whole thing. Based on what we did last time, we'll try to get something to advance for the year.
So this is what you're gonna take on to do that, right?
Check how long, how, how long you think.
Well, it's only done this week because we already got two more meetings on holiday this week.
You mean this month?
Huh? It'll be this month, yeah. Well, no, I, I have two more meetings and holidays. I personally have two more meetings on holiday this week. I'm working on a holiday, that's fine.
We also have, we have Thanksgiving and.
Yeah, it gets nicer at the end.
So do you want?
I'm looking at the first, I'm suggesting the first week, it's December, something near.
You want it?
Why don't you just do the regularly scheduled December?
Which would be in the summer?
December, would that be correct?
I'd say that's.
Do you have other? You give me a look.
Yeah.
I might have one, but it's, you know, that's okay.
Because realistically, we should be able to work through this pretty quickly. I mean.
Yeah, if you're gonna have it in advance, you're gonna know what it says and there may be some things to work out. And there may not, you know.
Okay, so amending the motion to recess until, are you guys, sorry, are you guys all good with just putting it on the regularly scheduled?
How much?
Does that work out for you, Richard?
Yep.
How much do you think we have for that December, regular December meeting?
I might have one zoning case. I, I'd kind of like to bring it in and, and this would be appropriate because we've had this convulsion of, of minutes that are sitting out there, putting amendments. And minutes from your last regular meeting and the findings of fact from the last regular meeting. We need to come in and then you already did all the stuff cleaned up. I'd like to use that meeting for that because I got one pending zoning case. It's
Why not be correctly filed?
But we need to get perfectly taken care of and make this up for you.
But we should be able to, it may run just a little bit long, but we should be able to get almost everything done in that one meeting.
This, this is not worth finishing this up, I would suspect. Quickly run through the changes, when we're done. And maybe you guys. And, and vote, yeah.
We're taking, taking care of the minutes too. You're gonna come back with a change. The minutes are gonna be.
We had the minutes.
Right.
So recess until seven PM on Thursday, December seventh.
Correct. Have a motion.
All right.
All right, all in favor? Opposed? All right, thank you, gentlemen.
We are recessed, right?
Our recess.
So we'll see you on Thursday for the regular.
Yes, we'll be there.